Good evening. We'll start this meeting a little differently. Normally, we convene the city council, but since we just finished closed session, which was under the RDA, we'll just start off with the RDA agenda. So I'll let our legal counsel report us to if there's anything that happened in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one on the redevelopment agency agenda was a conference with legal counsel regarding real property matter. There was a report given, direction given. There's no final action to report at this time.
Okay. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Seeing none. Oral reports and public participation. I know there was an item that was turned in by a lady. We will discuss that when we open up the regular city council agenda. So we'll give you an opportunity to speak at that time. Any conflicts of interest? I see none. Then we go right into scheduled items. First items is the minutes of Act Number 26 meeting.
Move it.
Was that a motion?
A move.
Oh, that was a move, okay.
I'll second it.
And I guess we'll go ahead and vote on that. Do I hear any opposition? Seeing none, so carried. We'll go ahead and, are there any reports? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and adjourn the RDA and reconvene the regular city council.
Okay, the city council is called to order. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Present.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Bertamperie Papasku.
Here.
And Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We will start with invocation and pledge of allegiance by your mayor. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to live in this wonderful city. Please help us to make it a better place with our discussions tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, now we come to the oral reports, public participation. I have a request from Darla Stern to speak on an issue.
Hello. My name is Darla Stern. I live at 25177 Palm Drive here in Loma Linda. And I am co-chair of the North Central Neighborhood Steering Committee meeting, and where we are trying to improve the neighborhood on the north side. This meeting, we've been doing for how many years, Betty?
Three.
No, we've been doing it for a long.
Five, ten. It seems like forever.
Forever. I've lived next door to her, I should say, I moved next door to her nine years ago, and she encouraged me to come and join, and I eventually became co-chair with Art Walls. And we have always met every month until, I guess, the city was having financial problems, so we were going to do meetings every other month. We did not meet for four months in the summer this year, and now we want to meet on a regular basis every other month. We met in October. And I, Joanne Heilman, which is the secretary for the city manager, has informed me that we will not be meeting in December. And Floyd Peterson, since he's no longer here, used to represent us as one of the city council members, so I don't know if someone also from the city council will be there to represent us. I think there's only one of you that live on the north side.
I'm the representative on that committee.
Councilman Duper lives on the north side.
We both do.
But he was the official designee to attend that.
You're more than welcome to come to our meetings. We would enjoy you there.
You actually had a meeting approx-
In October.
Just about, yeah, in October. I was not able to attend that because of a conflict, but, yeah, I was aware of that. So we had one in October, and now you'd like to have one in December?
We're supposed to. We had it on our calendar as scheduled for December. And Joanne is telling me we should not meet until February because it's redundant. What we're, what is going on in the meetings is redundant. It's not redundant, you know, Pam kind of tells us some things about the building, which is kind of redundant, but that's okay. And Jarb closes in on Public Works, and then, you know, different speakers come if possible. But our main focus is to find out what's going on in our neighborhood, the crimes that are being committed, what it is that we can do to keep things, you know, going. Winter Sinsel was robbed. In fact, that weekend, prior to us meeting, we wouldn't have known about it unless we had met. And so basically, I want to, you know, try and make sure we meet every other month, and make sure someone from city council, if they are going to be there, I mean, someone to help us out.
Well, let me respond. Yes, we plan to have a meeting every month. And, but we can't do it next month. We said we'd do it in December.
We're doing it in December.
And then you say that you cannot make the December meeting.
No, I'm sorry. Joanne.
And Joanne.
Joanne said that she can't, or didn't want to have a meeting, because she said it was redundant and everything just gets repeated.
So we wanted to schedule to January month, and then you said you can't attend the meeting.
No, we schedule every other month.
Okay.
So we would like to meet in December, especially because of the holidays and all of the crime that is committed during that time. It would be good that we at least get together. I did go to Art Walls' house tonight, and he couldn't make it, but he said that, you know, this is something that we do need to meet for. Floyd told me that this is actually our committee, you know, it's for us. We live here in Loma Linda. We live in the neighborhood. We need to meet. And I know that sometimes Joanne feels that we don't need to meet. Well, she has actually told me that, Jarb, unfortunately. So, and I've been co-chair probably for, what, four years now, so.
Yes, we will have a meeting in December.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, I don't know how much we can talk about non-agendized issues, but it sounds like to me what we have to do is decide who has the authority to call a meeting for these committees. Is it the committee chair, or is it the staff support, or who? But that just seems like a general topic.
And it's on a, you know, we schedule it for December, so she just had let me know.
Most of our other committees, it's, there's a schedule, and the committee chair or co-chair decides whether we should have one or not. Now, in defense to Joanne, if there are no items and the committee just meets to get information, it may seem as if, well, why do we need to have a meeting if all we're doing is getting information? And it sounds to me like regardless, you would like to make sure we meet every other month. Okay.
And Public Works, you know, Jarb, thank goodness, he's Public Works and city manager now, but he still comes. He still informs us of what goes on, and Pam, the same. You know, we used to have someone from code enforcement come, and they no longer do. It would be nice to have someone from code enforcement, because that way we can let code enforcement know what's going on.
Perhaps you might be able to help me with this, because I have never attended any of your meetings. How many citizens sit on this committee?
Well, there's two co-chairs, and then there's probably, I would say, what, eight to 10?
Okay. And do you always have a quorum?
There's not necessarily, we don't have a, it's not like that. It's one that's-
So it's only like three or four people showing up?
Not necessarily. And I've even, Joanne has provided me with flyers where I go out, and I go door to door, trying to encourage people in our neighborhood to come to these meetings, and I have. In fact, I was going to ask Joanne for some, for our-
Because in defense of staff, if we have committee meetings in which we only have one or two people showing up, and we're paying staff to show up, it does become an issue.
Oh, yes.
And I think that's what they're probably concerned with. But I think we pretty much understood where you're coming from, and we'll try to take steps to address it.
Yeah, and I was willing to go out again and, you know, get more people, and so.
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, I understand this committee is a community organization. It's not a city organization or committee. We do not appoint these committee members?
No, it's an informal committee that was established years ago when we were contemplating various developments and improvements in that north central neighborhood. And so we brought the community together. We began meeting actually at their homes, in their front yards, when Charles Yamaeta was on the board. And then it gradually progressed to our community room. So it varies as to how many community members actually attend. But it's not a formal committee with, where they vote on anything. It's an information gathering for the north, for the members of the north central community.
So my point of that is that this is not a formal city-appointed committee that is subject to the Brown Act rules and so forth. The city staff helps, may help facilitate it on an informal basis, provide reports and information, and attend when they're able. But in theory, the committee can meet on their own at any time they please, whether or not city staff can be there. If we convert them into a more formal city-appointed body, then we have to follow certain other rules. And I think we probably would not want to go to that extent.
And just to let you know, three years ago, Art Walls did request that of the committee, and we decided not to take that avenue. Because we don't want to put any more, you know, the ci, I think the city has enough to do, you know, and Jarb, as Public Works, he doesn't always have to be there. Pam, she isn't always there either. So it's not something that they have to be at. But we do like to have at least the sheriff's department. Sylvia Beasley does come, and we do have speakers there that informs us about what's going on. In fact, I think last time we had someone from the fire department that was telling us about the earthquake emergency stuff, informing us. And so it's just, it's basically just to keep things, you know, aware in our neighborhood, and the crimes, and it's also about that, so.
Yeah, I think if you went with a more, if we went with a more formal committee, then you would also be required, if you sat on the committee, to attend. And like the attorney says, there are different rules as far as-
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to go there.
Things like that. So maybe, maybe committee is kind of a strong word. Maybe it's more of an advisory, citizens advisory meeting, or something like that. And then, again, you know, getting staff and people to show up every time, whether or not they have information to, you know, to impart or not. I'm wondering if that's something that can be handled with Sylvia Beasley on a regular basis through the sheriff's department. It's kind of like a, like an, almost like a neighborhood watch or community information meeting or something like that, maybe shared with the fire service. Because it sounds like that's what you're more interested in, is what's going on as far as the crimes and things like that. Maybe not so much whether or not Jarb's putting in a new sewer system.
Correct.
But, you know, I could be wrong. But that sounds like what you're, what you're looking for. So maybe that's something that staff can discuss and figure out. Maybe it's just a retooling of what you guys want to do, and then you can meet on your own and invite whoever you want, and not have to go through the city for that.
A year and a half ago, when the new fire station, you know, was put down there, my ideal was, let's start having it down there, you know, and there at the fire station. And then we don't have to worry about having the community room and having the different things. And that wasn't an option. Joanne said that, you know, she, I guess she talked to one of the fire chiefs, and it wasn't safe to meet in the, because the only place to meet down there is in the, where they have the trucks, so.
Yeah. I can assume that staff's going to, you guys, you'll take care of this. And it sounds like it's just maybe a miscommunication, but I think you'll get taken care of. And then also, I can act as an alternate, too, if Councilman Papasku can't make a meeting, or, not saying we can come every time.
Yeah, but come, you know, if you want, find out what's going on, you know.
I'd like to.
Always a good idea. We invite anyone over there that lives there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just from my own clarification, when are the meetings, and who from city councils plan to participate?
So, Ovi, Ovi's the designee, and I guess there's no formal notice of the meeting since it's not a formal-
It actually is something that's mailed to everyone that's on the committee, so-
What committee?
It's the North Central Neighborhood Steering Committee meeting.
And is Councilman Papasku on that maiden list?
Yes, and I was notified of the meeting, which was in October.
Yeah, and Floyd was the person before he, you know, had resigned. So, and it would be nice, maybe, if Phil gets his address in there, so that way he can be notified. It's every other month, and then we don't meet in the summer. We'll take a four-month, hopefully recession in the summer term. Is that the good idea? That's what we did this last summer.
You can do it any way you like.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, is there anyone else who has any comments on items not on the agenda? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move on. Item number one, we have a presentation on hazardous mitigation plan update, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Emergency Services Coordinator, Deborah Kreske, has a presentation on this. I guess the biggest point to remember, at this point, this is a presentation on status, an update to a process that is currently happening, and an opportunity, as required by that process, for your review and also public input to the plan. After it is submitted to the county, then to FEMA, it will be brought back to you for a formal action. So there's no required action other than review and input tonight.
All right, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me up here. And as Chief Bender had mentioned, that this is just for your review. So what you have in your packet is a draft version, very draft version. I do have some copies with a couple plans in it. If you would like one of those, I have a hard copy for you tonight. But tonight, I just have a couple slides to show you, very generalized, to go over a couple items in the plan. And at the end, if you've got questions, I will try to answer those. Just in a nutshell, the hazard mitigation plan identifies hazards and mitigation actions that we are going to do to reduce those hazards. FEMA emphasizes that the hazard mitigation plan should be what, what needs to be done rather than how it should be done. So it's, they're not looking for a lot of detail. They're looking for generalized information. The plan is required for federal assistance programs, such as the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program. And I also put Assembly Bill 2140 up here, because in this bill, well, following a large disaster, if there is an emergency proclamation, then we have a opportunity to get some funding back, whatever the damage was. And the federal government, FEMA, they will pay, they may pay 75%. Well, the remaining 25% may be paid by the state. If we have a hazard mitigation plan, there could be a higher percentage of that 25% that the state will pay back. And so they are really pushing on local jurisdictions having these hazard mitigation plans. Hazard mitigation plans are required to be updated every five years. The city's plan was last updated in 2005, and so we are due right now to update our plan. In the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, it encourages that local jurisdictions participate in a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And in 2005, we did partner with the County of San Bernardino in the hazard mitigation, in the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. There were 56 partners. And we're doing it again, once again, this year, and there are 54 partners. And that includes all 24 cities and towns, and the county, and then special districts as well. We, in the city, here, we have a planning team that we talk about the next steps on moving forward with this plan. And this group is also doing a review of this plan, just like all of you are welcome to also. And we have members in here from the city personnel. We have a representative from Loma Linda Academy, as well as the Loma Linda University and the Medical Center. In the plan, just a few things in the plan here. One of the things that we identify are the hazards. And we went ahead and used the list of hazards that were in the 2009 general plan, and, which was earthquake, wildfires, the floods, hazardous waste, slope failure, airplane crashes, railroad accidents, and terrorism. The top three, the earthquake, wildfires, and floods, those are our top hazards that we focused on in this plan. And when trying to identify and put that plan into a list to prioritize those hazards, it's, it's hard to pinpoint which is worse than others, because it depends on the incident. You can have a huge incident, and then other ones can be much more minor, depending on, on all of them. But in general, what we did, we looked at the probability of a hazard happening, and then the impact it could have on the city. And looking at those two, and ranking them, we came up with the earthquake, wildfires, and floods as the top three, as you can see there. And this chart here is what a lot of the cities and towns are using in the plan this year. A couple of the projects, well, the projects that we have listed are the Anderson Bridge Seismic Retrofit, which is proposed. And I should mention that if there are proposed hazard projects, then those need to be listed in this plan as well. So the Anderson Bridge Seismic Retrofit, Loma Linda University Medical Center's Seismic Retrofit Project, it's hard to say so many times, the Urban Wildland Interface Hillside Weed Abatement Program, and the Zanki Channel Improvement, which is proposed also. And I've got to say, as we kind of looked at the state of the city, where things were in the mitigation projects that we've done in the past, the city is in really good shape, and they've done quite a bit already in the past. So though we don't have a massive list, it's because we've already done quite a bit already in the city. The timeline for this plan, tonight was the first time we're putting it out to the public and to all of you for, to let everyone know this is here, if they would like to review it. We will be distributing it between now and the 16th to our, some of our volunteer groups, such as the Surt and Racis. And on the 17th, we will be going to the Planning Commission meeting and just giving them a briefing, just like we did, we are doing tonight. And then on the 24th, I am hoping to get all information back, comments back from everyone. And we will review those comments and possibly put them, update the hazard mitigation plan with those comments. And then by the second, we need to submit the hazard mitigation plan to County OES, the County Office of Emergency Services. And then they will send it up to CAL EMA, California Emergency Management Agency, who will then review it there, and then it goes up to FEMA for final review. And then at that time, they will let us know, yea or nay. We'll make our updates as needed. And then it will come back down. We'll bring it back to council at that time and for approval. Okay. We will have this plan available at the Fire Department. If anyone is interested to come and review it, we will have a copy there. And there will be a sheet of paper that people can make comments on, if they wanted to do that. And so that's it. If there are any questions about this plan?
Just a quick question to help some of us understand the process of recovering costs with some of these incidents. So we have a flood or a fire, we total up the amount of damages, and then you would automatically file with FEMA and some state organization at that point, or, help me understand the nuts and bolts of that.
Well, an example is, back in January, February, we had some storms in the, in the county. If you remember, there was, in town here, we had a lot of, we had some down trees. We had some damage to some of our-
Yeah, it's a storm drain system at, at Van Louven and Orange Grove, that little corner there. It's always have a water filling up that location.
So we did have some damage at this, at this particular, during this storm period. And when the county, they were getting damaged as well, and so were other cities. Well, when the county will look at their damage in the unincorporated areas, as well as the damage going on in other cities, they will send out, they send out a document that says, do you have damage? How much estimated damage do you have? So they gather all of that damage up, take a look at it. If it's large enough, like during this time, if it's large enough, then they will do an emergency proclamation at that time. And then they will submit this, all these numbers, pile them all up, and send them up to FEMA and say, we've got this, we have all this damage. And that was also during the snowstorms up in Big Bear, if you remember that. So that, that's where a big part of the damage was also. But everything was sent up, and they looked at that, and they said, okay, this is large, in nutshell, I'm really generalizing this. And they said, okay, then we are, because of its size in the county, we are going to do some reimbursement to these jurisdictions on these projects. And so they, they gave us 75%, FEMA did, and the state gave us a, the other 25%. They covered the other 25%. So the damages that we submitted, it was around 20,000, I believe, right around there, between 19,000 and 20,000 in our city. So the numbers that we sent up to them, they were able to reimburse us at this time.
So at least that process will be in place, that you'll carry that forward if and when we have the next incident?
Yes.
And we don't have to rely on the state to declare a disaster area or something like that for funding.
No.
That's one of the, like pet peeves, and I think a lot of citizens' pet peeves, that, you know, as individuals, you can't get loans unless your county's designated. know, as individuals, you can't get loans unless your county's designated, and you can live just over an arbitrary county line and not be eligible. But I'm glad to hear that this is, is not that same situation.
That's right. And there are some fine lines and some gray areas. And so you've got to do what you can with the information that you have, so that you can get some reimbursement and help to fix some of the damages.
Thank you.
This also pay for the staff, time, overtime, when they have to come out to the incident and remove the debris and so forth. So it's very, very nice reimbursement.
I had an opportunity to sit down with the, with the fire department a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about this and our plan and where we're going. And I, and I have some experience and understanding of how this works, and I know that from seeing what, what our department is doing and where we're going, we're going to be far ahead of a lot of other cities and a lot of other places here, especially in the state. FEMA does have a kind of a strict set of guidelines, and we are definitely getting compliant, and far more than probably a lot of other places. So I'm actually very proud of our fire department and very proud of the work that you guys are doing. I mean, it's, it's very important. And believe me, when it comes down to getting the money and stuff from the feds and the state, they do, especially given the significance of the incident, they will look at our plan and evaluate how well we've, you know, prepared for things. So anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to give Deborah a lot of the credit for that. Certainly, that storm example, historically, that would have probably just been work we did as part of every day's work, and it certainly, the addition of Deborah to our community has brought, shed some light on the opportunities there to actually get reimbursed for those things that we historically would have just, hey, that's all in a day's work, and that's what it takes to run the town. So we appreciate what you've brought to our community.
Thank you.
Yes, and Deborah and I also talked about, there will be eventually probably some time when we'll need to do some training and things like that, too, as a council and staff and things like that. But she was very on top of it, again, very impressive.
Right. In December, actually, we are going to be talking about the, kind of the state of disaster preparedness in the, in the city here. So we'll probably be doing a workshop and let you know kind of where things are and where we're going this next year. All right?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our consent calendar. Is there any item anybody wants to pull, or? Go ahead.
I just had a question on item number four. I noticed that we're approving the, toward the contract for the rehab of the 100,000-gallon and the 3.2 million gallon and the $8 million gallon reservoirs. And there's a contingency of 10%. If we go beyond the 10%, if we go beyond the actual contract, would we be advised of that with a amendment or change to the original contract? Or is it automatically that you're willing to pay the other 10%?
No, a lot of time is, is, I will come back to the city council if it go over the contingency that the city council was approved.
Okay, so you only come up to us if it goes over the contingency?
Correct.
But you can do it on your own if it does go beyond it?
Correct.
As long as it's, okay.
Yeah, I think the point of contingencies is that it gives spending discretion, so, yeah. Okay, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move it.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Okay, hearing none, it's approved. We'll go to old business, we have item number five, Council Bill O-2010-02, this is a second reading and roll call. Amending and adapting the Building Code, multiple components to that.
Do we just move it? Okay, I'll move Council Bill O-2010-02 for second reading.
Second.
And does the motion also include waiving formal reading, reading by number only?
Yes, and I'll make the motion that we waive the formal reading and read, reading by number only.
So we can go with the roll call?
Okay, I'll read it by title. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda adopting and amending the 2010 edition of the California Building Code, including Appendix Chapter I, Appendix Chapter J, the 2010 California Residential Code, 2010 California Green Building Standards Code, 2010 Electrical Code, 2010 California Plumbing Code, 2010 California Mechanical Code, and 2010 International Property Maintenance Code, and repealing Chapters 15.08, 15.10, 15.12, 15.16, 15.20, and 15.24 of the municipal code. And you may vote.
Question, on the, on the property maintenance code, my agenda reads 2006. All the others are 2010.
Set a typo.
I'll clarify that.
Okay.
It could be a typo.
Okay, but we can, can we go ahead and vote? So?
It's the mechanical building, it's electrical building system.
Where is that?
Yes, no, and abstain.
I need one more vote, there we go.
It's intended for you to be anonymous, so we can't see how your hand is. Phil said no. Well, it passes anyway, so it's no problem.
Did you vote, yes?
I think my buttons are mislabeled. I can't even read them, I know it's really hard.
Yes is, yes is the farthest one from you.
Okay. All right.
So it looks like that passes, right?
And you voted yes, right? Okay.
Then we'll go to item number six, Council Bill O-2010-03.
I'll move that we instruct the clerk to read this by title only for setting it for a second reading.
I'll second that.
It's entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Adopting and Amending the 2010 Edition of the California Fire Code, Adopting and Amending the 2009 Edition of the International Fire Code, and Repealing Chapter 1 5.28 of the Municipal Code." And you may vote. It's unanimous.
Okay, good job. Number seven is Council Bill O-2010-04, second reading and roll call, adopting the 2010 Wooia And the appropriate motion would be to accept it, or instruct the clerk to read by title only.
I'll make the motion to instruct the clerk to read by title only, a motion to adopt this code.
I'll second.
It's entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Adopting and Amending the 2009 Edition of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code." You may vote.
Once again, ours says 2010, so, but we'll clarify, right?
Those may be the correct dates, they may be the most recent versions that we're adopting, but I would have to check with the staff on that.
And I need one more to vote. Okay, and it's unanimous.
Okay. Now we'll move to new business, we have Council Bill R-2010-40, establishing bail amounts for parking citations. There's some state mandated changes for court facilities and repealing Resolution Number 1755. The fire department has an update.
Yes, sir. As many know, some may not, that parking enforcement in our city rests with the fire department, and in our Community Safety Division, as an introduction, it's been roughly 17 years since we've made any modification to the bail schedule, since that time of number of legislative changes, making assessments on each citation. And our fire marshal has a more detailed update on those assessments and the recommendations for the updated bail schedule.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, council? Glad to be back. As the chief's indicated, this evening, I'd like to present to you the Council Bill R-2010-40 and the accompanying resolution that goes along with it. If you're already familiar with it all, I can just answer any specific questions, but if you'd like, I can give you a brief overview of how we got where we are today from the beginning of our program.
I don't, I'm not asking for that, I just had a question.
You go ahead and ask a question.
On Exhibit A, where you have the bail, and then the second row is D E L bail, is that delinquent bail?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to clarify that, thank you.
I think probably an overview would be nice for the Channel 3 people with insomnia.
Essentially, as we all know, the best way that I know how to explain it, that I can easily understand it, is on a daily, virtually on a daily basis, we try to push 50 pounds of cars into a five-pound box, and we have a definite traffic control problem. I should emphasize from the very beginning that our, the traffic control, our traffic control program was never intended, nor is it a revenue generating program. It's, it's designed to control equitably and fairly the number of cars that we get in the city each day. Essentially, in 1980 is when our program started, the initial bail schedules, and I'll just give you a reference of our typical, typical ticket or citation, which is overtime parking or in a, in a zone that they shouldn't be in for too long. In 1980, that fee schedule was established, and that, the fee for that particular citation was $25. The state, very quickly after that, assessed a $5 charge to allow for building of prisons and courts in the state. And in, in response to that, they had a resolution, the city council back then, in 1981, readjusted, and then ultimately in 1993, the last change of the bail schedule, it was changed to our current $30 that we have today for a basic citation. Since then, we have, the state has, through state bills 1407 and state bill, or Senate Bill 857, they have, the state has added a $4.50 charge, and this is for each citation, a $4.50 charge, and again, December of this year, a $3 charge. So up until tonight, when I hope you will pass this resolution, the, the city has had to pay the state $7.50 out of that $30 citation, as well as the cost of the program administrator, the folks that we contract with, the cities that we contract with, to manage that program, those fees have gone up incrementally over the years. So what we're asking on this bail schedule is essentially to, to make the playing field more even again, where it was initially intended to be, to rail, basically across the board, raise the bails, the bail schedule by $10. And, I lost my train of thought there, but essentially, the $10 will recoup that, and in, along the line of, that program is not a revenue generator. By, by passing this resolution tonight, our figures show that we will still be only covering 80% of the cost of the program to run as it is now. If we don't pass it, our, our data indicates that we'll be covering our current program roughly 67%.
Okay, so this is clearly no attempt to make revenue?
No, sir.
And we're nowhere near the red light running ticket levels of $470.
No.
So we're less than one-tenth, so it's a bargain. You want to violate something in Loma Linda, do it on parking, not on red lights.
Until December 1st, and after that.
Yeah.
I was just curious, why did we decide to go for the, I'm sorry, I forgot, the percent you mentioned, instead of getting to 100%? You know, I guess from looking at it from the quote's law-abiding citizen viewpoint, they'd say, well, why don't we make the person that had the violation pay for the entire cost? In essence, I'm going to be subsidizing it. If I'm the one that doesn't get a violation, why not make it recover all the costs?
I can address that in two ways. One, the chief has the actual numbers that he can, he can give you and can kind of explain the number part of it. But what we, what we did to see where we were in comparison to our sister cities, we did a survey, and I can give you that survey, that just shows where we line up with San Bernardino, Fontana, Redlands, Colton. And they are, some of them, the most part are a handful of us on our bail. And by readjusting where we are after tonight, if we readjust the bail schedule, we will still be in that average, if you will. So in answer to your question?
We felt like the, certainly in overtime or permit parking, that $10 jump still kept us within perhaps an industry standard of our region. It's probably the best answer versus...
The lesson to be learned here is don't illegally park in Fontana.
I'm sure we could all argue and have slightly different thoughts on it. Again, my inclination personally would, I don't want to support people that get tickets, and if I am the one that violates something, I should have to pay. But anyway, it's, I'm not sure it's worth rehashing all these figures, but the next time we adjust these, that's my general opinion.
And one other, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the other ways to recoup the money is to go out and basically enforce more diligently or spend more time. But I think right now, our enforcement personnel are doing other community service type things as well, and not just out there 24 hours a day writing parking tickets.
The one traffic officer that we have, she, she works a four-day week, so essentially, Friday is fair game, if you will.
There's a random day per week.
Random day.
It's happened so often.
But yes, she's, I mean, she's on the road diligently as long as she can be out there. You know, I mean, if we, in an ideal world, yeah, there would be a whole lot more tickets written.
To some degree, it's also trying to make sure we're representing a tone, the tone of the council and how enforcement is applied. I think we're, it's been making sure we get compliance in the residential parking zones and the timed parking zones, and I don't know that, we're trying to go find any little infraction in the community and cite people. We, we haven't ever been given direct, that kind of tone from our council and our community, so that plays...
Yeah, and don't misconstrue my comments to be directing.
Yeah, right. I would say that I, we still represent that tone today, and unless there's a shift, and I don't believe there is, that's how we serve the community.
I'll tell you, I think by far, Loma Linda tends to be a far more lenient community than a lot of the surrounding communities, and that's kind of evident by the bail schedule, but by other things, too. And again, the purpose, like you've said, is not to generate revenue, it's just basically to cover the costs that are involved here. But I will tell you all a quick story, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me. When I was young, brand new, and getting ready to get into law enforcement, I worked for our neighboring city as a parking control officer. And I have never in my career, now working for the sheriff's department and going through many crazy, difficult, scary situations, I had more people threaten to do bodily harm to me over a $15 parking ticket than taking them to jail potentially for many years. So it is a very touchy subject, I will say, before we get into it.
I would also add, though, that I think between now and certainly when the next legislative bill goes into effect in December, if it is the wish of the council for us to be more inclusive of the total cost of operating the program and make the adjustments based on that, versus what might be regionally acceptable, we could, I don't believe it's a lot of work to do that modification and bring it back to the council. So we, we're at the council's pleasure, and certainly, if you'd like us to take that approach.
Question, just for my own clarification, the numbers under the Loma Linda column are current or proposed?
Those are current.
Current.
Those will cross...
And the proposed would be?
$10 higher.
$10 above each of these amounts?
Yeah, in your packet, you have the new, the new...
Except for the handicaps, the same.
Handicaps stay the same, correct. But in the back page of your packet has the new, what the new resolution will show in the bail schedule, what it will go to.
So it can be noted for the viewing public, as the mayor said earlier. For example, one of our sister cities, a handicap parking ticket is $500, and we're going to be at $290 if we approve this.
No, $280.
Well, we, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we are staying at $280. But clearly, we're not as high as some of the other ones, we're about on average with some of the, some, but there are a couple that are higher.
Can, can you give me a little background on why we want to increase these fees? Is this to cover our costs of implementation? Is this to cover our costs of implementation, or...?
For the most part, except for the seven dollars and fifty cents that the state has added on since we went to thirty dollars. So back in nineteen ninety-three was the last time we adjusted this bail schedule, and that was to accommodate the five dollars that the state raised it prior to then. So since nineteen ninety-three, we've been operating at thirty dollars a citation. And in nineteen, I think it says there's Senate Bill, or State Bill fourteen oh seven. In two thousand and nine, they assessed a four-dollar, another four-dollar-and-fifty cents. And then in December of this year, next month, they'll assess another three dollars. So this is to...
So this is in response to the state's tax on the local government for parking citations?
Per citation, correct.
And also, there's administrative fees that have gone up, because there's a separate company, I'm understanding, that administers all this stuff for us, and their fees have gone up since we probably first started doing business.
And that's the two dollars and fifty cents to give us the ten-dollar total.
So this is only bringing us to a level of balance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. What remains is the motion in a second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, do we want to, do we want to move this item? Or do we want to, do we want to table it in and have the, another, have it brought back with another proposal for the increased fees to get us up to a hundred percent?
I am comfortable with moving as, as it is. If someone else wants to come back and raise them again, they're more than happy to. But I'm comfortable with, with this proposed in front of us.
Should you move it?
I, I'm going to go ahead and make, make a motion that we pass Council Bill R-2010-40.
And I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We have reports of councilmen.
Just want to say, please shop in Loma Linda. Eat, buy gas, and buy anything you possibly can in the city of Loma Linda.
Apple products.
Yes, apple products.
Lots of apple products at the campus bookstore.
Um, I'd like to, I'd like to publicly thank the fire department. I came out about a week or so ago, and I did a ride along with them, and it was a great experience. I learned a lot, and I had a great time with them. They're a very professional organization, and I'm very proud of the services they provide here in the city. So I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Okay, reports of officers, do you have a response to?
Thank you, I might also add, uh, if anyone was concerned about the column of smoke this last Saturday afternoon, we did have a vegetation fire in our city. Held it to about a hundred and twenty-five acres, um, probably seventy percent of that being in our city. Outstanding response, again, I think we saw the value of certainly our, our contract for aircraft and bulldozers, and I guess the luxury of having those resources available quite locally, instead of all over the state this time of year. Lots of fires, we were able to put a lot of resources quickly. And an incident that oftentimes goes all the way to Riverside County was held, uh, held about a hundred and twenty-five acres. So it was a good response and attack, and it's often challenging. We bring Riverside County, San Bernardino County, and multiple agencies kind of collide right there, and it's a triangle we all refer to that can sometime lead to some challenges with communications, and it all went off very well. So I was proud of the response and certainly the containment of that incident.
So we got a little bit of...
I didn't see the smoke. Do, do we know what the origin of the fire was?
We have some ideas that we're pursuing, right, still.
Okay.
So we got, got the brush engine dirty?
Yes, sir.
Good job.
That was, that was big enough, it made the news, it was on the news for a little bit. And, uh, yeah, so we beat out LA finally.
Just had, I just had a question regarding that fire. The units that responded to it, which is our city units, how did, how did they get to it? Did they use Ritchie Canyon Road, or do we actually have to go through some of the roads up through the hills?
No, no, we're, we're forced to go, uh, into Colton and then back into Loma Linda. We don't have any roads that go through. So yes, we go Ritchie Canyon Road.
Okay, thank you.
And then another comment, um, you know, I was watching it go down while I was at work in my other job, but also, I want to commend the sheriff's department, because they brought resources in from other areas, not just what we had assigned in our city. And again, another example of how we get more than, more often than what we bargained for. So they came in and helped out too. But again, proud of my fire department and the sheriff's department.
We, we, we did have deputies already positioned in neighborhoods, ready to, making announcements, ready to move people if it needed to. We were able to hold two ridges, uh, and kind of avoided the Scotch and Prado sides of it, which was ideal. But absolutely, the deputies were in place, uh, they were starting to make some announcements and warnings and ready to move people. So, uh, a lot of things came together really nicely there.
Okay, any other comments from officers? Okay, then we are turned, thank you very much.